Good afternoon, welcome to our June 20th, '23 meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no presentations, so we're going straight to our county engineer, Paul.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have several items today. The first is Resolution 23-822 to authorize the renewal option of the price agreement with American Rock Salt Company, LLC through July 31st of 2024. And we thank the Purchasing Department for helping with that. And then we have two resolutions to approve the purchase and acquisition of temporary construction and/or standard highway easements, and authorize appropriations for acquisition of said easements, and record the same. The first is 823 for Lower Miami's Burg Road Culvert Replacement Project in Miami Township. And the second is 824 for Wagner Ford Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the City of Dayton and Harrison Township.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But there must be a mistake.
Why?
We're already talking about salt for the roads?
You got back at a time.
Get the contract out? Whoa.
Can't start talking in November.
Ah, I know, I know. It just seems like going so fast.
Okay, so renewal option, that means it'll be the same price, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Knock that in. All right, thank you. County Sheriff?
Thank you Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 825 authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Eastway Behavior Healthcare for the support of a crisis intervention team at a cost not to exceed $384,000 through September 30th of 2025.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Common Pleas Court?
Under the Court of Common Pleas, we have Resolution 826 authorizing a grant agreement with the State of Ohio, Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, Division of Parole and Community Services, for the use of funds made available under the Community Corrections Act 2.0 grant for state fiscal years 2024 and 2025 in the amount of $6,863,711 through June 30th, 2025.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Michael, do you know how they distribute that money then, when they get that $6 million?
Um, they have an allocation process that they do that the courts use for this, for this grant, and they'll go from there.
Okay. All right, just wondering. Okay, thank you. Juvenile Court?
Thank you Commissioners. Under the Juvenile Court, we have Resolution 827 authorizing an agreement with Nationwide Power Solutions, Inc. for uninterruptible power supply, UPS, preventative maintenance, in an amount not to exceed $4,239.66 through June 30th, 2024. And Resolution 828 amend the agreement with the City of Dayton to provide mediation services for youth referred by juvenile court by adding $10,600 to the original amount for a revised total of $95,600.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Office?
Under the Treasurer's Office, we have Resolution 829 accept the investment reports for February, March, and April through 2023.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on June 13th, 2023. Resolution 830 approval of bills. Resolution 831 approval of travel and expenses. Resolution 832 approval of personnel actions. All three lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services. Hi Haley.
Hi, good afternoon. Under Administrative Services, we have Resolution 833 authorizing a price agreement with Ferguson Enterprises, VBA, Ferguson Water Works for ductile iron and pipe fittings for the Environmental Services Department through June 30th, 2024, with options to extend. Resolution 834 amend the agreement with Citadel Plus, LLC for website design and development services by adding $20,829.52 to the original amount for a revised total of $146,954.56 through September 26th, 2024. Resolution 835 solicit bids for the Eastern Regional Water Reclamation Facility Garage Fuel Replacement Project for the Environmental Services Department. Resolution 836 re-advertise for proposals for the Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department. 837 authorize the extension of the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, ODRC, Reentry Coalition Extension Grant through August 31st, 2023. Two resolutions to authorize purchases for. 838 Safewear for updated CCTV and access control for the Stillwater Center in an amount not to exceed $492.27. 839 Environmental Systems Research, Inc. for the annual software maintenance renewal for the GIS computer application software for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $80,282.50. And two resolutions to authorize intergovernmental agreements. Resolution 840, City of Dayton to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020 State Homeland Security Program, SHSP, grant funds, and fiscal year 2021 State Homeland Security Program Law Enforcement, SHSPLE, grant funds. And 841, City of Dayton to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with fiscal year 2020 State Homeland Security Program, SHSP, grant funds, and fiscal year 2020 State Homeland Security Program Law Enforcement, SHSPLE, grant funds.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Haley, not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to, just a little bit. Um, so, we're extending the, um, expansion grant. I'm trying to find that one. 837. Um, so, how's that going?
That's actually going really great. The only reason we're extending it is the grant got started late through the state, so that's for the extension. Um, but what we're really excited about too is with our upcoming fatherhood grant, we're going to be able to extend our services not just for reentry, but fatherhood as well through this program.
Awesome, that's great. So, um, we haven't talked a lot about that expansion grant, at least here. Do you think maybe not next month, but sometime in the near future, you could talk about that? Because it's really, um, great, because we, we did such a good job with reentry. And so, this expansion grant has allowed us to help other counties with the same. So, um, giving you some time, but maybe in the next couple of months, we could have a, just a short presentation so everybody can know what that's about. Because I love the regionalism of it, and, um, for a while, I think it's going to be the wave of the future of us all working together with our neighbors.
Absolutely, we would be happy to.
Okay.
We've been tracking some great outcomes and measures with this program.
Okay, good.
You know Commissioners, this also dovetails with our fatherhood grant, too.
Yeah, that's what, will you talk a little about that, Michael? It's exciting.
Well, actually, Haley, I'll let Haley go ahead and talk about it.
Well Haley, you can talk about it.
See, I mean, it's coming right in her department, but it's definitely a team effort, so I didn't want to talk about it.
Yeah, that's great.
Sure, so we're really excited, uh, we are getting a fatherhood grant through the state, and one of the primary audiences of the grant is our returning citizens. So now, our returning citizens, that are dads, will not only be able to do more fatherhood programming in their prisons, but also have, um, more connections for referrals and incentives as their returning home as well. And that grant is also multi-state, so we'll be working with Clark County for this, for this grant. Um, but we'll also be able to work with dads in incarcerated youth, um, as well as expand our community fatherhood programs.
Great, and it was a significant amount.
Yes.
Yeah, 700?
Seven, up to 700,000 over two years.
That's great.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Okay. Environmental Services, hi.
Hi. Environmental Services has Resolution 842 release 100% of the catastrophe and subirish contract with Design Homes of, for Senator Terrace, Lot 3.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Jerry.
Hi, good afternoon. So we have a couple resolutions for you under the Human Services Plan and Development. 843, it's the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry System in an amount of $524,603. 844 is the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities to provide early intervention services for infants and toddlers with disabilities ages birth through two years in an amount of $1,339,173 for state fiscal year 2024. And we received a little increase of about 90,000 to 100,000 this year, so that's really exciting.
That's great, yeah.
Um, and then under the Department of Job and Family Services, we have Resolution 845 authorize a memorandum of understanding, or MLU, with the Montgomery County Family and Children's Council to support the needs of children enrolled in the Multi-System Youth Program through June 30th of 2025. And Resolution 846 authorizing, excuse me, an identity software as a service agreement with Coradata Healthcare Innovations, Inc. for children's, for the Children's Services Division. And last week, we had a similar, um, resolution on, which was a part of the state to allow us to be a part of the program. This is specifically for Children's Services Connection for the portal.
Okay, good.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business Services, Chris?
Thank you Commissioner. Under Business Services, we have Resolution 0847 authorizing a purchase from Cronus, Inc. Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract for Hardware and Software Annual Maintenance Services for the BCCIT Department, amount not to exceed $200,000 through December 31st, 2024. Under Community and Economic Development, we have two authorizing grant agreements through December 31st, 2026. First one is 0848 YMCA of Greater Dayton, LLC for the Northwest Health and Wellness Campus Project, amount not to exceed $500,000. And 0849 City of West Carrollton for the Adventure River Park at South Montgomery Low Dam, and a amount not to exceed $750,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I love that they're calling it the Adventure River Park.
Yeah.
It just sounds exciting, you know. All right, well, we will now move on to a, um, hearing. Uh, 23-850, the Winger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project.
Yes Commissioners, Cameron Spear is our project manager on this. She's back again this week to do the hearing on the Winger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project.
Welcome back. Good to be here.
Please swear affirm the testimony you've got to give, be it truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do.
I do.
Thanks Commissioner. All right, good afternoon Commissioners, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen of the public. Uh, behalf of Montgomery County Attorney, I am Cameron Spear, and today I will be presenting to you the Winger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. So, the project location, um, as we can see here, we are in Clayton, uh, this is Clayton, on Winger Road between Hope Road and Union Boulevard, and in general, just north of I-70. Zooming in on the project location, uh, we see that there is a residential drive to the west of the bridge, as well as a shared-use path and pedestrian bridge south of the structure. And as noted last week, this bridge will not be impacted by our ongoing project.
Okay.
So, existing structure details, the bridge was built in 1988, um, and it is a single span of 39 feet over Moss Creek. And this bridge carries two lanes of traffic, one in the eastbound direction and one in the westbound. And the scope of our project, um, is a complete replacement of the superstructure, as well as patching and sealing of the concrete surfaces of the substructure, and some improvements to the rock channel protection, as well as some minor roadway profile work and replacing the guardrail to meet current safety standards. A little bit about the existing condition, so to get a general overview, we can see the bridge from the roadway perspective looking east, and then we have a view of the profile, uh, from the south looking north. And now going into reasons why we're looking to replace the superstructure, to begin with the drainage system. So, the drainage for this, uh, bridge utilizes over the deck, side drainage, and this has two major components, the steel drip strip and a waterproofing membrane attached to the exterior faces of the outside beams. And as we can see here on the left, this is the south side of the bridge. Um, the drip strip is completely rusted all the way through the whole lane, um, and it has several areas of, uh, missing steel corroded completely all the way through. Um, and on the north side, the second picture on the right, um, we can also see that corrosion for the entire length of the drip strip as well. And then, looking at the waterproofing membrane, the waterproofing membrane on the south side is in the worst condition. It's completely worn in several locations and actively falling off, as you can see in this picture here. And on the north side, it's not as bad as the south side, but it is still wearing significantly, and overall, the drainage system has reached the end of its useful life. Uh, looking at the abutments now, uh, overall, the substructure is in good condition, um, but we did note in recent inspection reports, there are a few areas of large patches of delamination, so that's where the concrete on the outside is starting to pull away from the main body of concrete. And we just want to go ahead and remove this delaminating concrete, patch it with new concrete, and then seal all of the exposed concrete surfaces to protect the substructure and get the most time out of it that we can. And now, the primary concern for this project being the superstructure deck, uh, condition. So, these three pictures, you're looking at beam number two. Um, in the first picture, this is depicting some of the delamination that we're seeing on the beams. So again, that's where the concrete is starting to pull away from the main body of the beam. And then, in the second picture, we're seeing the start of a spall. So that delaminated concrete has now progressed into the spalling phase where it's going to fall off. And then in the third picture, we have evidence of active spalling. Now that concrete's completely fallen off, and we have exposed pre-stressing strands, which are the main structural component of the beams. And this condition, while it's worse for beam number two, it's also present on other neighboring beams, as well as beams on the other side of the structure. So here we see, uh, beam three alone that joint shared with beam two. We see a lot of that same deterioration, a little bit on the other side where the beam three neighbors beam four. And then, on the other side of the bridge, beam seven, we see some more delamination, as well as spalling and exposed pre-stressing strands. Now going into the right-of-way, this project, there are nine adjacent property owners to this project, one of which is a temporary right-of-way, um, that can be seen here in the yellow. And then in the blue is our one, uh, utility easement for this project. The seven remaining property owners are not, uh, going to be impacted by the right-of-way. Going into more detail on parcel 2T, so again, this is the temporary to the northwest of the structure. Um, that, that piece of land is primarily agricultural, but we have designated the edge of crops, and this temporary easement will not be in, uh, impacting the edge of crops in any way. And this is required for the contractor to have access to perform the construction needed on the bridge, as well as replacing the guardrail and subsequent grading of the shoulders. And this is a view of that, of that parcel from the roadway. And now, looking at the utility easement, um, parcel 7U. This easement is required to de-conflict the overhead electric lines within the construction limits, um, but it also serves a secondary purpose, because we will be moving this pole that's currently right behind the guardrail farther away from the guardrail. In the event that the guardrail is impacted, that way it can perform as designed for safety purposes and deflect as it needs to. And this is a, a photo of the, of this parcel. Here's a breakdown of the project costs. So, all of the design was done in-house, and the right-of-way costs have yet to be determined. However, the construction costs approximate, uh, are approximately $390,000. Um, and the county engineer has obtained an LTIP grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission in the amount of $195,000 for this project. And here's a tentative schedule of our project. So, design actually concluded last month in May. Um, and right-of-way acquisition is set to begin next month in July and take about six months to complete. That's putting us at advertising and awarding early next year, January and February, and then going to construction the following spring and, uh, March of 2024. And due to the geometry of the structure and taking into account the traffic conditions of this site, we will be utilizing a detour for about 30 working days. And this detour diverts traffic from Winger Road along Hope Road, National Boulevard, and then, uh, uh, or National Road and then on Union Boulevard. And, but the residential drive that we saw earlier will still be accessible from the west, and the church on the east, as well as Cedar Drive will be accessible from the east. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have no questions.
No. Mm-mm. Great, thanks. I move to close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed, and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the Winger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in the City of Clayton, and recognize it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of and uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Ohio Revised Code, and authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Cameron, thanks Commissioners.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we have no comments by citizens. Uh, County Administrator?
Thank you Commissioners. Um, I'd like to give a big shout-out to our Community and Economic Development Team, specifically to our Director, Tawana Jones, and Pam Fannin, uh, for their work on our Economic Development Edge Program. Um, this program is so vital to our big picture as far as continued job growth. And Commissioners, you've always been supportive of individuals having an opportunity to have good jobs in Montgomery County. Uh, in fact, uh, we just had a big announcement last week that we were a part of. General Motors has made an announcement, um, that the DMX facility in Brookville, and the project was partly funded by Edge, uh, which helped keep 714 jobs in our county. Uh, those jobs could have went elsewhere, uh, and the fact that we were able to be a part of keeping those jobs and the possible attraction of new jobs is really spectacular. Uh, our Edge team works with multiple municipalities and helps them, um, in, with the projects. We have awarded 3.7 million in grants for projects in Brookville, Dayton, Inglewood, Germantown, Harrison Township, Hoover Heights, Moraine, Union, and Vandelia. And over the past 31 years, uh, there have been 555 projects assisted and $108 million awarded through Montgomery County Edge Grants. Uh, those projects have created and retained about 70,000 jobs during the life of the project. So, uh, great program, great job to our Economic Development Team, Tawana and Pam. Keep up the good work, uh, we appreciate the work you are doing. And one more thing, uh, our own, Jerry Pogies, uh, has been working for 30 years. Uh, she forced me to present this at the BCC today.
Oh yay.
Uh, so we are very blessed to have Jerry as part of our team.
Yes, yes, she missed our big event.
She did, she was, she was, she was surfing.
She was.
And, uh, she decided to come home.
Jet skiing, one of the two.
Yeah, so, uh, but Jerry, we're very proud of you. An example also Commissioners of our investment in youth, Jerry started off as a youth, as an intern.
Well, that was nice. I'm glad she started out as a youth, and I.
I think we all started out as a youth. I started out as a youth there, too, so Judy.
But Jerry was an intern with the county. And, uh, and she's now in senior leadership, and that is really spectacular.
We're very proud of her.
Of how we grow our own here in Montgomery County. So Jerry, 30 years.
30 years.
Yay.
Yay Jerry. Go get your beautiful pen. All three Commissioners got pens too last week. Judy got 40, I got 30, and you got 25.
No.
20.
No, 15.
Oh. It just seems like so much longer.
Because I'm so wise.
I know, I know, that's for sure. Well, Jerry, thank you. I would have rather been where you are too, I think.
That was really nice.
So, I want to give a shout-out to our Fatherhood Committee. Did such a great job. Haley, you know, we were all there, and, um, I can't tell you how many times I had tears in my eyes at that event. Um, so, we celebrated on Friday, the Fatherhood Banquet. And then on Saturday, beautiful Saturday morning, we celebrated the Fatherhood Picnic. And, uh, the turnout of both events was incredible. So, you know, Mike and his team, uh, you, you just, it's what they're doing with a small team. Of course, now we have a little bit more money, but a small budget, um, it's just, it's wonderful. And to, to see the dads there with their children, um, was so heartwarming. And, and many of our returning citizens who work with the Office of Reentry were in attendance. Um, and I think these events, well, I know these events are so valuable for them, um, and the entire community, but to see the dads and the, and their, uh, children at the, uh, modeling up on the stage and going through, that was just, it was really great to see. Of course, every year, um, our, our Judge Gerald Parker brings just two adorable little girls, and they modeled too. And they won the big, uh, raffle prize too this year. Um, and, and the reason we do the Fatherhood Initiative, well, there's several reasons, but, you know, dads need to make that connection, um, and know that they play such a vital role in their children's healthy development. And even if they are no longer with the mother, uh, the kids need that connection. Fathers help children with self-esteem, healthy relationships, and so much more than just their financial support. So, it was great for us all to attend those two events and to let the dads know that our community supports them, and also to let them know the resources that are out there, that, not just the county resources, but we had so many other partners that came out for, uh, both night, both Friday night and Saturday afternoon, um, that are, are great resources in our community. So, um, Haley, send our, our greatest thanks, um, to Mike Newsome and our entire Fatherhood Committee. You know, a lot of that committee, well, they're volunteers, and they do it year after year, and it's so great to see them, so, um, make sure he knows that we value he and the team, and you. What you guys are doing really matters, so thank you.
You know, the other thing that, I, I learn something every day. I actually learn a lot of things every day, but the one thing I learned, um, when he was speaking, I, uh, even though I know how long that our Fatherhood Initiative's been here, I did not realize we were the first county in Ohio that introduced the program. And so, it, and I know it's growing through the grant and others are catching on, but, you know, it just makes me very proud that our community is always out there on the edge, um, finding new solutions to problems we encounter. So, I just lift that up, but it's like, I didn't fully appreciate that.
Yes, so, there were several nonprofits throughout the state, and I'm thinking of the one over in Clark County. Um, can't think of the name of it right now, but.
Eli's Group.
Yeah, Eli's Group. So, probably, what Judy, 15 years ago, they approached us and said, you know, um, this is what we're doing, we'd love to have you guys partner with us, and, um, the governor at the time started the statewide Fatherhood Initiative. And so, we were like, okay, that makes sense.
I know, I was, I just discovered that.
That makes sense. And so, yeah, I mean, it started out with very small budget, um, still is, right Haley? But, you know, we're making the connections, and year to year, to see that banquet grow.
Yeah.
And see the dads that come through it, moms they're welcome too, but, you know, that connection with their kids is so important. And it was also nice to see our, um, our young people, our little male ambassadors that were there escorting, yeah, they were great. So, yeah, it was a good weekend.
Yeah, it was a busy, busy weekend with that. And then, um, Saturday, we had the Juneteenth Celebration at Levitt, and, um, that was fun. We were the sponsors for the, uh, entertainment, and it was great music from the Rebirth Brass Band. Rebirth Brass Band, they were fantastic.
From New Orleans.
A little loud, but they were fantastic.
A little loud.
But they had a great crowd, great crowd. And, um, so, you know, we all enjoyed it very much. It was New Orleans sounds with their jazz and funk sounds, and, uh, it was very, very good. Um, the vast majority, though, of our county employees enjoyed a three-day weekend, however, for the Juneteenth. But, we also want to give a shout-out and a big thanks to our Solid Waste District employees, wastewater plant operators, Select Animal Resource Center employees, and On- and on-call staff who could not take the day off. So we appreciate you, and I know our citizens appreciate you for the services that you do, that they cannot take a holiday. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. Thank you dear staff and teams.
And on a totally different note, um, you know, it was Father's Day weekend. Obviously, we talked about fatherhood, but, um, so, with fathers, they love their electronics. So I'm told, I had to keep my husband away from even thinking about such stuff, is a new TV and other tech items that they might want to get for Father's Day. Uh, and I'm told that there'll be appliance sales for Fourth of July. I don't keep up with all this stuff, but that's what they tell me. But why do we care about that? Because they come in big styrofoam, you know, boxes with styrofoam. And wouldn't you know, we have an event coming up at the end of July. So please, please, please do not put those big items out in your trash. That is not where they belong. Uh, we are going to be recycling them. So we want to keep it out of the landfill. Our next styrofoam recycling event is going to be on July twenty-ninth from nine AM to one PM at the Business Solutions Center, which is located at one thousand four hundred and thirty-five Cincinnati Street in Dayton. And so, if you can visualize when you're coming down by, uh, U D Arena and that area,